Okay, every two years we have the special opportunity as an obligation after an election. And a lot of people have been asking over the last couple of months, but we actually, the term of office starts January 1st. So tonight, anybody that, no matter if they're a new member or if they're a past member, any term of office they start, we do with a oath of office. Tonight will be in two steps. We have the second ward council member, T.I. Shippers, will be getting sworn in for her second four-year term, as well as council member Doug Melama will be getting sworn in for his second four-year term. And usually, as you can tell by the audience, usually after the first swearing in, the crowd in the audience is a lot smaller. But we do have, Bunce is here, T.I.'s husband is here to witness the swearing in. And I'm sure Mr. Melama's family at home is watching. But after that, we then will be swearing in for the mayor, Carla Filkins. This will be her first two-year term. The mayor has a two-year term while the city council is a four-year term. And I'm trusting most of the people here tonight are probably here for this instead of the public hearing. But especially, we want to recognize a few members of the audience that will be here for Mrs. Filkins, and that is her husband, Mike Filkins, is here. And I know that her son, Michael Filkins, is present as well. And then Sergeant Gabe Filkins from the United States Marine Corps and his wife, Allison, are here. A special note, I think you guys have the award for the furthest traveled for any swearing-in ceremony at the city of Cadillac, coming from Virginia, but soon to be North Carolina. And then also, Mrs. Filkins' mother is here, as well as her brother, and then many, many friends. So the first we're going to be doing through the city clerk will first be having the two council members go present for their swearing in, and then that'll be followed up by Mayor Filkins. And you could go to the front. Let's see.
All right. Good thing I can walk. That's all I get is a name. You're okay. Where do you want us, Sandy? Do you want to go here? It's all sort of looking here. Is what I can hear. If you could just talk to me. Do you, Antoinette Shippers and Douglas Melama solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter and ordinances of the city of Cadillac, and will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city council member to the best of your ability?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. We'd like to add, as Mayor Filkins is going to the front, is her sister is also here as well.
Do you, Carla J. Filkins solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter and ordinances of the city of Cadillac, and will faithfully perform the duties of the office of mayor of the city of Cadillac according to the best of your ability?
Thank you. Wow. Thank you very much. We're all very excited to start out 2014, even though the weather out there is frightful. We are going to get started this evening with the approval of the consent agenda.
First the first call.
Oh, are we going to do the roll call? Oh, I thought Sandy said we wouldn't. Okay. Okay, Sandy.
Councilmember Melama.
Here.
Shippers.
Here.
Spelman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Filkins.
Here.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the...
There is.
Okay.
Mayor, members of the city council. Actually, just prior to the consent agenda, if we can just do approval of the agenda.
Yes.
We do need to add a brief closed session to the tail end of our regular agenda this evening. The suggested addition would be located after good of the order as a new item just prior to adjournment. We would simply call this move to closed session to discuss pending civil litigation regarding hearing the city of Cadillac at all.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the closed session.
Support.
Okay. Sandy, roll.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Spelman.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Melama.
Yes.
Mayor Filkins.
Yes. At this time, we are going to open the floor for public comment. The first public comment this evening, we would like it to be kept to the items that are on the agenda. We would also ask that when you come to the podium, that you state your name and your address. And then additionally, if you would, we have a piece of paper there, it would be very helpful to the clerk if you could write down your name. If there's no one that would like to come at this time, we will close public...
Here comes someone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, Matt.
I'm Michael Garra, outside of the city, but I'm here representing the Amvett's Post 110 here in Cadillac. And we wanted to welcome you as the new mayor to the city, and we look forward to working with you as we did Mayor Barnett, and we hope we get along just as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Give it a second.
Mr. Plattman?
Day Representative Phil Plattman, 129 Petrie Road, Cadillac, Michigan. My congratulations to the retaining members, T.I. and Doug, and also Mayor Filkins. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And look forward to working with you as I continue my term also, working for you in Michigan.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Congratulations.
Okay, if there's no one else at this time, we will close public comment. And then next on the agenda, I would like to make a motion to, or look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Sandy, roll.
Councilmember Spelman.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Melama.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Filkins.
Yes. We don't have any proclamations this evening, so the next thing on the agenda is that we will open a public hearing. And the public hearing is to consider the approval of the resolution to adopt ordinance 2014-01 to transfer city-owned parcel to the Cadillac Housing Commission.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Just as a brief refresher, if I may, this item was presented originally to the city council back at the first meeting in December of 2013. Due to it being a transfer of land, in accordance with our rules, we did need to wait an extra meeting, which is why it's not back before you this evening for the public hearing. I believe Owen has a quick snippet of information he'll share with respect to the transference of the land itself. And I'm not entirely sure at this point if... Oh, there is Judy right there. Judy, perhaps if you wanted to come forward as well and give a little synopsis, that'd be helpful.
Turn the mic, pull the mic down. See the mic is...
If you could just flip the mic back. Thank you. Super.
Okay.
Yep.
Owen, did you want to...
Okay, sure. I was just pulling up the map. This is a piece of property that is just a portion of the land that the Housing Commission's current development is on, over off Leeson Street. And the information that we could find was from the early '70s. The Housing Commission actually owned this parcel and deeded it over to the city as part of, to the best that we could ascertain, a bond issuance for the development that was taking place at that time. All of the covenants of those bond transactions were taken care of. There's no outstanding debt. And at this time, the Housing Commission, based on the desire to do some further development, wanted to have that land back in their name, and we see no reason not to.
I don't really have anything to add to that. I can if you'd like, but that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Okay.
Is that parcel one or parcel two on the map?
I think it's one.
Parcel one, yes. It's the bigger one that the building is sitting on, what, about half of it or two-thirds of it?
No questions? So ask anybody else.
Does anybody else have any questions in regards to this public hearing? Would you like to come forward? Okay. Well, at this time then, we will close the public hearing and maybe have some council discussion in regards to this resolution.
It looks like this is just a matter of, you know, some paperwork that needs to be done here to move this over. This piece of property is sitting right where the apartment complex is. And I think we just need to clarify that this belongs to the Cadillac Housing Commission and deeded over to them.
Do you want to make that resolution?
Yeah. So... Trying to find my stuff here. I'll make a motion.
Right here.
To approve resolution to adopt ordinance 2014-01 to transfer the city-owned parcel to the Cadillac Housing Commission. Support.
Okay, Sandy, roll.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Melama.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Spelman.
Yes.
Mayor Filkins.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next thing that we have on the agenda then is the city manager's report.
Thank you. At this point, the one and only item under the report is a look at the calendar year 2014 with respect to the city council meeting schedule. As a point of reference, the city council does regularly meet on the first and third Mondays of every month at 7:00 PM. In your packet in the communication, there are two dates, January 20th and September 1st, both of which are federal holidays, one being Martin Luther King Day and the second being Labor Day that do run into conflict. The recommendation would be to cancel those two meetings and host them the following evening, and Tuesday, January 21st, and Tuesday, September 2nd. Additionally, there is going to be a governor's race coming up, both at the August primary and the November general election. And the recommendation, given everything that is required to do here when we host elections, is actually to cancel both of those meetings. So the recommended action at this time would be to continue to have the city council meet on the first and third Mondays of every month at 7:00 PM with the following exceptions: one, cancel the January 20th, 2014 meeting and reschedule to January 21st, 2014; two, cancel the September 1st, 2014 meeting and reschedule to September 2nd, 2014; three, cancel the August 4th, 2014 meeting; and four, cancel the November 3rd, 2014 meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the calendar year 2014 for council meetings as presented by the city manager.
Support.
Sandy, roll.
Do you want to discuss?
Oh, I am sorry. Let's not miss that part. My apologies.
No, I'm sorry. I just had a...
Okay.
This is, I'm wondering about the two meetings that are before the elections. This is something we've never done before.
Correct.
And is there... I know in the past, we've, in cases like this, we've held off to see how things were before in case there was important business that we needed to deal with, in the sense of if there was a company or somebody needed a public hearing that could put us into four or five weeks. I'm wondering if we should just do what we did before on those two and wait until it's closer to see if there's a need to meet. And I'm not sure, the reason of doing this is this...
We had, I had, along with the former city clerk, received some verbal concern about having the council meeting the night before a major election. There was some, I think some additional anxiety and pressure put on the election workers and the clerk before, I think it was during the last presidential election. And so, in looking at, you know, what's coming up on the horizon, knowing that the governor's race could be a big, a relatively larger turnout than a normal, a normal election here, sort of a presidential election, that there would perhaps warrant canceling the meeting. Certainly, this is up to the city council as to whether or not you wish to cancel the meeting now, or keep it on your schedule and then cancel it, you know, later. Or if you do cancel it now, as everyone knows, you can still call a special meeting if something does come up that would warrant getting together. So it was our thought to put it out there.
I know we've been really mindful in the past of the clerk, because that is a lot for them.
Right.
But we'd always talked about possibly having somebody fill in or whatever. I just, I just hate to see if we had a, somebody with a concern or a need for a public hearing, if they had to wait four or five weeks due to that.
And I would, I would agree. I think if we had some kind of time-sensitive, you know, issue with respect to, especially with respect to some kind of development, or a business needing a hearing for something, we would, I would bring it forward and ask for a special meeting, so we wouldn't have...
I think in terms of planning, this might be the better way to go, so they know that they can work around us not having a meeting unless something does come up. And then if something does come up that we have to have a meeting, maybe we can, you know, we'll schedule it and we'll only meet for that purpose, so we'll be very sure.
Yeah, and this is just was brand new. I was surprised. We've just done this every year, and all of a sudden, this change came up, so...
I know we had spoken about this before, about the possibility. It was after, I think it was after an election when we were here till very, very late one time, and then there was a, the polls opened at seven or six or whatever, and we were here till like 1:00 the night before the election. And I think that's when it was just sort of informally discussed. So it's, it's very easy to, to post a special meeting. And I think as councilmember Spelman said, that it gives people a heads up that if they have something they, that is time-sensitive, they could do it at the meeting before. Or, or if, you know, like you said, if something, you know, things pop up, we could do a special meeting. Does that make sense?
I agree, as long as we have the option of a special meeting.
Absolutely.
Because things do come up, and I know they're time-sensitive, like the Don's Auto Clinic. That was an example.
Right.
So as long as we have the understanding that we would call a special meeting if the need arises, I fully understand the problem that those two dates present.
I guess I had a question too. On the, on the two dates that you moved from a Monday or Tuesday, is that the practice that we would normally do?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the holidays.
On the holidays? And so the public would expect that it would be on the Tuesday following the holiday? Okay.
Yeah. We have done that in the past.
Okay. Okay, so, any more discussion on that? You okay with that? Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve it?
Looking for a roll call.
Okay. I'm a little lost, so bear with me. Sandy, could we have a roll call now?
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Spelman.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Melama.
Yes.
Mayor Filkins.
Yes. Okay, then the next thing that we show on our agenda is that we have received from the minutes from the different boards and commissions. We've received the minutes from the Cadillac Wexford Transit Authority, minutes from the Wexford County Airport Authority, from the Cadillac Planning Commission, and from the Downtown Development Authority. And these were sent to us for informational purposes only. Marcus, do you have anything else in regards to those?
I don't this time.
Okay. All right. So that then takes us back to public comments. And again, we would request that comments be limited to three minutes.
I don't think we've ever had this many people in the House with so few public comments.
Without anything to say.
Usually we see this, it's like, oh dude, we're going to be here till 11:00.
Okay, so then we will go ahead and close public comment if no one's going to come forward. And tabled items, did we have anything there, Marcus?
No.
Okay. All right, then we move to the good of the order.
You can start anywhere you want.
I can start anywhere I want?
Marcus.
Okay. Well, why don't we start with Marcus then?
Thank you very much. Congratulations to Doug and T.I. and Mayor Filkins. It's going to be an exciting new year, and happy new year to everybody. Also, I'd like to say thank you to staff and Tara, especially if you can reach out to the folks out there taking care of the community from a snow and ice perspective. For those that may or may not know, there's, there's just a single crew of individuals that are out there taking care of the city. And so, while there are certainly some slick spots every now and then, I think they're doing a tremendous job, so, great work. Thank you.
I saw the snow pushed away along Chestnut Street like I've never seen it before. Somebody must think more snow's coming.
Laurel Street, it looked like they were making room for more.
Yeah, well, it's January 6th.
Not out of the woods yet.
We're not out of the woods.
Marcus, I have just a couple of factoids on the snow removal that I thought may be of interest to the, to the council and the public for this year. Doesn't seem like we've received so much snow, but we've put down 500 tons of salt already, as opposed to 277 at this time last year, and only 125 at this time the year before. We've used 174 tons additionally of salt-sand mix, which was up from 70 the year before, and spent already $121,000 total in, in winter maintenance. So we've used up about 45% of our, our winter maintenance budget in the first month of the winter, so hang on to your hats.
But it's going to be short weather on Monday.
Short weather on Monday, yeah, exactly.
All me 40 degrees.
That's even worse. Makes everything sloppy.
Okay, Doug?
Just a couple of things. The issues and solution over coffee, haven't had a chance to talk to Mr. Adams, but I will tomorrow if Mr. Adams has time for me.
Oh, good.
Okay. And the other thing is our Cadillac Manufacturers meeting will be January 14th, and it'll be at Pride Hopes. And those are the only two announcements.
Thank you.
Okay. First of all, congratulations to the council members and the new mayor, and happy new year to everybody, and looking forward to busy 2014. Seems like before we just start, and then we're going to be already wishing everybody Merry Christmas already, but looking forward to 2014. Also to Captain Matt Wolfisle's retirement, and it was unfortunate, I, we didn't find out council when their, his little party was, so I want to make sure he, he hears that from council that why we weren't there is because we didn't get notified. But on behalf of, you know, that's a lot of years committed to the city, and wanted to congratulate him as well. I also had a note to thank the staff. We did send out from council a little happy new year thank you from the council, recognizing them. But a lot of times, we overlook those that are working on holidays and mentioning, you know, Tara's here tonight of the street department, how well they've kept up on things, and sometimes that requires holiday work as well as the police and fire as well, and to give a special notice to them for their efforts. And then I, in relationship to the, the police, I was going to request for the council to get an update on Marcus, maybe through a discussion, excuse me, a memo or something as to the, what's going on with the police. I know we're all getting asked those questions, and we don't have the answers to say in terms of that, as well as the school liaison position as well. So if maybe we could get an update to this council, that would, that'd be appreciated. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Just a couple of things. First of all, I'm looking forward to working with everybody in this great year of 2014. Congratulations to the two mayor and the council members who have been re-elected to their seats. And, you know, I was looking at the Cadillac paper, the Rover, is it Rover column? And I saw that somebody had, had a question about why isn't the city plowing our sidewalks more frequently? And, you know, they've got a new piece of equipment, and El Duman responded about how difficult it is to get to all the sidewalks in a timely fashion, not to mention the fact that we've had so much snow already. But I want to remind the citizens and the business owners and everybody who has any building in the city of Cadillac that there is an ordinance that it is our responsibility to clear our sidewalks. And I think that's really important, especially when we're experiencing a winter like we have so far. It, it takes an effort on all of our parts. So I know it's hard for some elderly folks and others with disabilities to get out and do it, but if we can all really work together on that, that's going to help a lot in terms of having places where people can walk to get from their home to wherever they need to go. So just keep that in mind. Yep, we've got new equipment, but it takes manpower to run the equipment, and there are a lot of sidewalks in the city, so I would actually like to see our enforcement officer or somebody put a notice out to all businesses and residents that it is their responsibility to remove the snow from the sidewalks. Because what I'm seeing is that there are churches, there are apartment buildings, there are dental offices, there are other units of government who have property in the city, and I don't think they know that because the sidewalk isn't cleared in front of them. We just, we really need to work together on this, so that's, that would be my recommendation, is getting that word out there. I know we try every year to, you know, we have an article in the newspaper, and I appreciate that, but some... are dental offices, there are other units of government who have property in the city, and I don't think they know that, because the sidewalk isn't cleared in front of them. And we just, we really need to work together on this. So that's, that would be my recommendation, is getting that word out there. I know we try every year to, you know, we have an article in the newspaper, and I appreciate that, but somehow we need to get that word out to even business owners, not just residents. Thank you.
And in, to segue from the working together, in this extreme weather, first of all, congratulations, Councilmember Malama and Mayor Philkins. And it's, I'm looking forward to working with everybody as we learn each other's quirks and how to just work as a team. We're really looking forward to working as a team. But talking about looking out for each other in this extreme weather, I've been hearing lots of stories about people helping each other out. And I just want to remind folks that your neighbors may need a little, a hand. If you see a sidewalk that's not cleared, if you see somebody's porch not dusted off, mail there a couple of days, go knock on your neighbor's door. Make sure everybody's okay. And take care of each other, and that's all.
Okay. Well, I would also like to congratulate Councilman Malama and Councilwoman Shippers. I am very excited to have the opportunity to sit on this council and work on the betterment of Cadillac. And the discussions that I've had with all of you, or most of you anyway, we all agree on that. And so I'm really looking forward to it, and I just wanted to be able to tell all of you this evening that we were. There was one comment brought to me about the lights in the park, the Christmas lights in the park. And it was someone from the Snowmobile Festival who would like to know if we can leave those lights up and light them the weekend of that event, because they feel like it would really add a lot to the venue if we could do that. So if we can give that some thought, that would be very much appreciated.
Will do.
Okay?
Will do.
Thank you. Thank you. And now we need to go to closed session.
We have to have a motion for that.
So how do we get there? We need to have a motion for that. So can someone make that?
I will make a motion to move to closed session to discuss pending civil litigation regarding Herring versus the city of Cadillac.
Support.
Support.
Okay, all right.
If we may also invite Jeff Dietl, Utilities Director.
And I would like to invite Jeff Dietl to come join us, please. We always appreciate his lovely face.
And that's added with the support?
Almost.
All right.
We have a roll call?
Roll.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we need somebody to make a motion to bring us in at a closed session.
I'll make a motion to return back into closed, come out of closed session and go back into open session.
Support.
Okay, Marcus, can you give us an update from closed session?
We have to have a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, good roll call.
Quick roll call.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Now...
Yes.
Mr. Pacheco, could you give us a...
No problem. Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. It would be appropriate at this time to consider a motion to accept the city attorney's recommendation as discussed in closed session.
I'll make that motion to accept the city attorney's, whatever Marcus said.
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
Support.
Okay, Sandy?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Okay. With that, is that everything we have?
I'm sorry, I wanted to, mainly for the mayor's behalf, but ours, a work session? Did we already set a work session for our next meeting?
Yes.
It's a special session for the purposes of moving into closed session, 5:30 on Tuesday, January 21st.
And that, that's a, that's not the work session for goal setting?
No, no, we have not set that yet.
It's evaluation?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then we still are looking at a goal-setting...
And I'll bring it up for that, Councilmember.
I didn't know if you were aware of that meeting.
No, I wasn't yet.
Are we going to have anything to look at before that meeting from you, Marcus?
I believe so. Did you ask me?
I did.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure.
21st. We did, I'm assuming, we knew that with the holiday and we set it already?
Yeah, we set it at the, one of the two meetings in December.
On the Tuesday.
Well, I think we did.
We did, because it's on my calendar.
Perfect. Anyway, you know about it and don't go...
Have you used that gavel yet, Madam Mayor?
No.
All right, maybe you can use it and adjourn this meeting.
Okay.
Meeting adjourned, boom.
Meeting adjourned. Boom. You could beat it.